We'll do a proclamation and I'll stop by. How right, sometimes you just send me the information?
I will.
And just a little bit of like what they've done or something I can put into the proclamation.
Living a hundred and fives.
It's not a little bit of a lot. Well, we can start our meeting now. First thing, oh, you don't have a clerk yet?
Oh, I'm doing double duty, uh, at least at the clerk's conference up in Mount Pleasant this week. City council meeting time, so this is continued conversation we've done in the past, if we wanted a little bit more proof here. Um, so this kind of city council feels like we're gonna move up. Uh, it's called start time or just study session start time, just it's just based off the conversation we've had for the study session.
Didn't we, didn't we say, um, if we, if we're done, um, or if we're going over for study session time, you know, continue even if the meeting starts at seven?
Continue conducting the study session, just delay the start of the regular meeting? I mean, you can, but it's there is a point out that it's not, you know, mayor perhaps it's not, you know, best practice, especially if you have other people looking for specific agenda items.
My question is that you can, uh, adjust the agenda though to say, um, you can just do it, carry on with one, one issue. Under council, council comments at the bottom.
Oh, add it to your city council agenda, absolutely.
That's a lot there in that, you're saying we had like an item on the study session that we didn't get to?
That's not something that we have to vote on that night and just carry it over to where it comes in here in council comments.
During the regular meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause I don't want, um, I mean, I'm not gonna tell you about how I feel.
No, I, I like that as a compromise. I mean, my only concern about moving the, uh, study session time to end earlier is regular meeting time to start earlier is we run out of time, right? And we don't, and we end up feeling like we were rushed to deal with items that are on the agenda during the study session. But if we have the option to move those agenda items as long as, you know, they're appropriate to do so to the regular meeting, that's a good solution.
You do, but here's my thing is that, and I'm not gonna do like, you know, other people do, I've been on the council since twenty eleven. And it's always started at six to seven and we're able to get, I mean, then again, we worked in such the minority that we're, I mean, now. But we're able to get that stuff together and then off the top of my head, honestly, how many times have we really had a long-winded study session? And I think also moving forward, we're gonna get control of our study sessions, so there's not outbursts, there's not people taking us off course, things to that extent.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, you know, I, I haven't really changed my viewpoint on it, I, I, I think.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
Because you don't understand that there needs to be some gray and some thing.
No, I mean, we changed it, we changed it because we were running into, you know, over and over again that we were getting rushed, you know, we never had time for council comments. And, and I guess if, in my opinion, if we had to err, I'd rather err on the side of having too much time than having too little time. I mean, I guess, I mean, one thing we could do, I think I suggested this at the last time, the, the goal is to try to not go so late into the evening. Let's just move everything up to start at five thirty instead of, instead of.
But I'm fine with that.
I, I've got no problem with that.
But I don't know, I mean, but you're the only person that is, um, time is more flexible than everybody else's. And so, I mean, my thing is, is that you have to be conscious of the fact that these people came, they've been working. Matter of fact, everybody from here gets up early in the morning to go to work, you know?
I, 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 yeah, I'm just offering a compromise to, um, you know, shortening it. Cause I just, like I said, I mean, we, we were having trouble getting, getting the council comments, we were having trouble getting the public comments, there were meetings where we were rushing through it. I just, I would rather have an extra fifteen, twenty minutes to chat with the residents and just hang out as opposed to starting early and having to, or shortening it and having to rush.
Or we could compromise that you can start at five thirty or you can have residents coming that can be the time you can talk to residents.
The goal is not to talk to, I mean, let me rephrase that.
Say it again, louder.
The goal, the goal of this.
The goal is not to talk to them.
Is not to have extra, it's not, the goal is to, you know, efficiently use our hour and a half, but.
I, well, it's, you know, honestly, it's, um, we're here to serve the people, number one, I understand that. Getting out at ten o'clock, um, is every, all the time lately is, is really.
But again, what you said earlier is getting a, getting a handle on our meetings, I mean, the, the, it's usually the, the council meeting, not the study session where things tend to get thrown out of hand. And to get a handle on that, then those will end earlier, so. I, I, I mean, if your minority can get, you know, just my opinion.
Kind of like just the idea of maybe, you know, after, maybe our, cause sometimes our council meetings kind of can fly by sometimes. And if we have room in there to continue discussions, I think we should like take that opportunity and not continue to be here all night. But, but also if we do, that's all, only if we have, you know, stuff that we didn't finish talking about. So, I mean, it gives us a new way to just keep moving, because we also can then be, you know, paying attention to other people's time instead of, you know, just our time. Residents might wanna get home too, even though, you know, we're all sacrificing.
Duh, I still, um, I'm flexible with starting at five thirty in, in my personal opinion. Flexible start at five thirty and then have our meetings still start at seven. And then the continuation, like we were saying, that there's something that's not, I think it also needs to be on backup to be priority that we discuss first. What we have to vote on that night, that should be, you know, that way first. Uh, the rest of it, we don't get to it because, and maybe we need to keep a closer time, a look at the time, because if we see that we're getting closer to like, it's six thirty and we haven't gotten a public comment yet, we have to cut off our conversation with the public comment.
I'm not, you know, but I'm not on board with five thirty, I just, I don't see it. Uh, Mon- Monday is my busiest day and I'm trying to get here.
Five forty-five.
I just can't always come as soon, so.
And there may be residents that wanna participate in the meetings, in the study sessions, or even business owners that can't get out of their work fully enough to be here on time for a five thirty start.
So unless we're even have to vote on this, right, or no?
Well, is it on your agenda?
Not today, I don't see it at some point.
Uh, yeah, you would need a, a motion to amend, because you approved your meeting calendar for the year, which has, includes on the start time of those meetings, so a motion to amend that calendar for remaining meetings to reflect the time change.
Do they have to be, does it have to be the consistent time?
Uh, I think so.
I mean, you, yeah, I, I would, just for the, for the sake of the residents and, and kind of beating up pattern, that, you know, they know the council starts at seven o'clock or seven thirty.
That has to be publicly noticed to make a change too, right?
Yeah, if you're gonna, I mean, when it comes down to it, I mean, if you have, you basically can, you have eighteen, if you change it, you can do it eighteen hours is kind of a cutoff then.
Right.
You need a special meeting, but just the time.
I only said that because I know the agenda kind of gets planned a little bit before the weekend, so it's more than eighteen hours a day.
Yeah, you should have a good indication, you know, before you even, you know, publish the agenda of whether or not the items on the study session are more likely to exceed an hour or if it's something that you guys can have a conversation about something at all.
Well, we're not gonna, uh, when are we planning on handling this, um, this particular item on our meeting?
If you guys wanna move forward, try to get to the agenda, I can go for in your April agenda.
Are you already gonna move forward within April, because we can talk about it again the next meeting?
April twenty-first.
And that's the other thing is that we need to use the, the study session on the first Monday of the month too, to be very, to be much more, um, low one, like what you're saying, stop canceling them, and that's where we can also have, uh, more discussion, yeah. And so, I mean, I think that that's also adjustment or more cancellations of the new. It was tiny. It brought you the change, why? Okay, so that's gonna be on the next meeting. We have any more, we wanna talk about regarding that? City council, uh, goal setting.
Yep, so this is continuation of last time that you guys know, since we only had three members last time, we don't wanna kind of dive into this too much. Uh, but now that we do have four, the five, we figured it'd be a good opportunity to dive into some more, so you guys have any more changes or we potentially adopt that for the next fiscal year?
So, um, one thing that I was, um, looking at is that our website mobile app is not the easiest still of the website.
The, throughout the.
The app.
So sure?
Website.
A actual website, okay.
Yes, um, because a resident didn't ask me to find something and vote or try and search for something, it's still not, it's not what I thought we were getting from.
Okay, yeah.
And I don't know if that's where we need to have a meeting, but after we just say this is exactly what we want and get one definitely.
We're supposed to get a redesign every year, contract, so.
Are we there or?
Is the issue with, uh, the organization of information, so it's challenging to find things? So that's not really a website design thing, that's really a data organization thing.
Yeah, that might, that might be something as simple as you guys just letting us know what you're trying to find and one, one set, first, see if it's even there, and two, properly organize it. Cause it is one of those projects where all current staff inherited it, so we did our best to update everything we had using it, it's a useful tool. We're learning all new tricks on it every few days when we try to update some stuff, but for us, we don't know exactly what we're looking for all the time, unless they tell us.
So that was just my thoughts on that one. Um, and then for the, do the more town halls, I was thinking about that, um, and I'll just be real transparent at this point. The only reason why I was against town halls is because it's just a session where it's nothing can do so that we're, that's happening from it, it's not, it's informative. And it should be where it is, um, where not only the residents learn something, but we learn something, but then we have people that take over those particular, uh, those meetings. That's one reason why I was a little hesitant, because we only have an hour and a half and make sure that something's done. And I would like to see more of it, like a, like a study session for residents and council people to be there. So I was thinking about that and I was thinking that maybe we should do it, um, do them like quarterly, um, for specific, uh, items that is currently going on and be very structured where this is only what we're talking about at this town hall, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, kind of like the finance town hall.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah. But still allowing everyone to be involved with it, because I think that when it comes to, um, saying this nicely, everyone to be involved in delivery and, and being, and being able to speak.
So conduct, uh, as many in-person meetings as possible, provide quarterly specific, uh, open houses or council meetings and city meetings.
I think so. But it has to be very, um, structured, I, I would say it has to be structured, more people feel empowered, that they have their same group with them, and that's, yep. Gets a little rowdy, not rowdy.
Should we take, if we're gonna do something like that, or we're gonna pick a specific topic or something that's more structured? I mean, it makes sense to do some kind of a survey of residents to find out what specific topics are structured on topic that you'd like the city to prioritize.
Wasn't some of that in your, you know, town hall that you hosted for the budget relax, what were residents' priorities?
But those were spending priorities.
Yeah, those, those were budget.
But we also got some.
It looked like a lot of, you know.
Well, we got feedback from the budget town hall, finance town hall, the mural town, I mean, not mural town hall, the survey. And so if someone can collaborate with all of that together, you'll figure out exactly, you know.
So you thought you were done?
I think we have. And then I think that then you can give suggestions, because what I would like, what I would like to see is that we start them sooner than later. And when we go through the survey process, that's gonna put us probably back to the end of more April maybe, and we could have had a town hall already.
Yeah, so I, what I would suggest is we plan a town hall on some specific topic.
Yeah.
And then maybe that creates the incentive or the impetus for people to provide feedback about other town hall topics that they would like to see. They could even come to that town hall, the first town hall, or any town hall we schedule and provide that feedback during those events, as opposed to doing a separate survey.
I know you and I have talked about, about, uh, potential town hall, like for a, a topic of like resident priorities, that might be a good one to start out with. And that might generate a list of other, other town halls that we may have subsequent in the, in the year. What's that?
I said that was just my thoughts on that.
Before we move from that section on transparent, open and honest government, um, we, I, I, Mike, I appreciate that we updated the formal communication plan with a specific target date. I'm wondering why we chose July thirty-first as the target date?
For me, that was letting me get through the voting process and then essentially July at least gets us, still, in my head, it was, okay, I think we can get one updated and finalized and approve it or it is July meeting. To me, it just made more sense if we added a month.
Okay, so I'm just walking it back from there, like, there's some steps that have to occur before we finalize that communication plan, like, it needs to be brought up at least in one study session for us to review and come to an agreement on. I don't think we need to do any formal action items on it until we actually get to ratifying it, like it doesn't require a public hearing or anything like that. But I think it will be a good idea for us to introduce it to the public at least once before we go on.
That could be something that's a hornball and, uh, kind of like what we do for the meetings, you know, how we keep the commissions and the different things at the bottom? This is something that could just be a reoccurring that on every meeting, and if we don't have update, we don't have update, we move on from there.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess the only other thing I would say here is this, I don't, I think the, the phone app is, is great. I just think we could probably utilize it a little more than we are, I know that requires somebody focusing on, on, on your end, but, um.
I signed up for that, my guys lost it, so I wanna know why it's happening. I know I've signed up for at least two, three times, but it's like nothing's going on.
Cause you don't have iPhone.
And I'm not gonna get one, we're not going down that road, we're not going down that road again, and I won't get anyone. Anything else under transparent, open and honest government? Dedication to service?
I was gonna say, uh, for maintaining robust and attractive business corridors, um, if we could add in there working, uh, dedication service means.
Oh, for dedication, go ahead.
Um, if we could add in there work with, um, Oakland County resources to fulfill that.
To be more about.
To be able to, yeah, to be able to, or like the DDA director and the coding force are working to Oakland County resources, because, you know, those things can change periodically.
You mean like Main Street?
Like Oakland Drive and things like that, so just utilizing the resources.
We know they are, right?
I know.
No, I was just making sure that you do know who they are. Okay, we just wanna document it. Gotcha.
Yeah, I think it's plus about documenting or highlighting, making sure that, can people read these, it's in the front of your mind, right? Yup, Oakland County's part of this too, if not just us. I love that suggestion.
All right, sorry, I'll talk to you about this one, but is there a way for us to consider asking the chief to consider attending one community event a year?
The chief or someone from this part?
The chief and or a representative from the East.
Well, it'd probably have to be more than one, because they, they hold an annual event, you know, for last week, they had a chili, it was, so.
No, you mean.
Yeah, outside of their event.
Just a thought.
Maybe next quarter, also come to our council meeting.
Which will get any of the power real?
Safe and secure.
Safe and secure.
Anything under that, anything else under that? Disco responsibility.
Yeah, I think the contracts is a really important item, it's something that I feel has been neglected, because of having a process at a regular interval at which we review all the city contracts, do reviews of the performance of the vendors, uh, providing circles under those contracts and then making an informed and transparent decision about what the city chooses to do in either renewing those contracts or handing them out to other service providers. So step one is create a formal list, um, to be reviewed during the budget process, but step two is also, um, reviewing the existing contracts.
Maybe we make that part of the budget process so that we don't know what happens every year, right? It's a formal step of the budget process is to review all the contracts.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Um, anything else under disco responsibility? First of all, uh, you know, I can play tricks on you, but I thought I said hypey for a second.
Well, that could be, that could be, that could be an agenda or a objective.
I think that, no. No, this is probably not gonna be, I'm sure, I'm off the council, it's about the rest, but when it comes to the local government training, I think there should also be some type of tracking of credits or certificates that the council members receive. So it's not just, uh, I'm going to, because this isn't, this is wide open, that we attend a minimum of one local government training, but we can go on LinkedIn and get government training and, uh, I shouldn't say LinkedIn, but you can get such a, I think it's just still where it should be, something showing that you actually completed this.
So, local government training, uh, or maybe local government certification instead?
So it's not even a certification, it's you get something, every time you go to training, you get something at the end of it, that says you completed it.
So it needs to be documented with the city.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, but then you think about like in terms of, you know, I think of conferences, for example, it's, it's training, because you don't get something at the end of a conference.
Well, we have tracking, cause you register, that's still a tracking, so like, for instance, I can't go to M M L, so what else am I gonna do? And maybe I brought it up because I am getting honored, because I finished mine.
Oh, you did, you did register with you?
Thank you, I'm just, thank you, yes, I did do something. Um, that, I think that if you don't go to something where, um, my case, to register your something, I just think that there needs to be some type of documentation, something that shows that you participated. Or like, we went to the, um, thing in Oakland County, yeah, for freedom planning.
Right, you've done that multiple times.
But they send us up, they say that, yeah.
Every time I go into that, twice, I got my papers, we took a case.
You get something.
Um, and that, those, that information should be posted on these websites, so.
Absolutely.
People can come and look it up.
That we're not making up stuff as we go along, we actually went through.
And also what topics are we learning about, correct, so there's a question about something, oh, so, so attended planning training, so, so attended finance training, so, so attended, attended grant training.
So I think that is falling into the first, um, bullet of the next one also, so those two should kind of maybe, either combined or.
Yeah, I got the message, whether they all get under.
Yeah. Now the subscribe, reach, journalists, organizations are periodical, what does the city get already, because we used to be a part of cranes and we don't have that anymore. I should say crane, say that crane and everything else.
I think M M L's a big one, yeah, and a couple of us have, uh, public management, so I see man, and a couple of us have little planning.
You get planning, right?
And they send us up also.
Yeah. And bridges free, inside two oh eight is free.
Okay. See you more.
And ready, says powder measure, the golden rule, we will work by the golden rule when it comes to interacting with staff, residents and the general community.
So under that, I think that if you can just acknowledge when someone's doing a good job on that, maybe something as simple as calling back to your, your elementary school day that you got the
Gold Star.
The Gold Star of the day and maybe put it even in our newsletter of what an employee or staff has done that was outstanding, that needs to be, I guess, just be more cl- being more conscious of looking for the good in people, I mean, they highlight that.
Is there a document you're looking at when you talk about?
No, no, it, it's in break, someone posed this question, we were talking about it, I think like a month ago, it might even have been Jason, or, oh, we were talking about smart bold, right? As much as we, as much as we appreciate this, we want everyone following the rule, it's how are we gonna judge it?
Well, and this is, I mean, it, it, well, I like the idea of providing some sort of recognition, you know, this also includes the council, not just staff, not just residents, right? And something runs me funny about giving ourselves recognition for doing the right thing.
Or somebody else too.
Yeah, like I gave the, the infrastructure studies, they all got bricks, engraved bricks, something like that, you know? Yeah, we wanna, we wanna talk about that, but, but they, but they got engraved bricks. They have a big paperweight.
A huge.
Huge paperweight.
But, I mean, the bigger issues, yes, how, how do we measure, like, what are we actually trying to accomplish with this goal? Work by the golden rule?
I think that for me, it is where, um, it's, and it's gonna sound weird, I'm saying, when I first got here, it seemed more like family, you know, like it, we worked, we all worked together. We all worked on different, um, things for the community, and now it's, it's not dogging it. It's that it just doesn't feel that way, like you wouldn't want people to be involved with their community, where, where maybe other people just didn't have nothing to do. But if it wasn't where you could come up here at, you call it like four thirty? Four thirty-five, it's empty and tumbleweeds are rolling through, so I mean, it's just kind of like making people feel wanted, to make them want to stay and do more. Or not do more, but enjoy benefits of working here.
Yeah, not wanting to, because enjoying what they're doing, it's a cultural thing.
Okay. And I think that we were, you know, we're better than we're used, and so that's what we're trying to regroup. Things are just all reflective of my whole bits of work.
I wish there was a, you know how you get, uh, surveys after you've like been on customer service with someone, like right after? That, that was something that was possible, but, no, I mean, that sounds like a lot of work, so, and it's hard to do that, um, on our side, it's, you know, infrastructure, like some way to figure out are people satisfied with their, with their service? Cause basically the golden rule is like treat people the way you wanted to treat them, so.
Get along to others and things like that.
Who, who, what they eat, and you just see if, you know, surveys go around, that may be a way to measure, like, are we getting good feedback?
What if we started out with, like, just like an, uh, an online, um, comment complaint for, you know, people feel like they've been serviced well, they can. What if we started out with, like, just like an, uh, an online, um, comment complaint for, you know, people feel like they've been serviced well, make your fire comment, and do it online through the website, and if they have been not treated well, then they feel a complaint form through the website, and we just have to figure out who, who gets some.
Don't say that, who gets it?
And how do they get disseminated, right? All kinds. But like, I just know if you do things like, uh, form, like Google forms, will provide you with a mechanism to take the feedback on a form and put it into a spreadsheet. And it's pretty easy to work with that app, and it doesn't have to be long or extensive, and it does have a free form field for, for ways to write their comment. Um, that, that, to me, that, that's a way then with people who are, uh, energized enough, either because they're happy or they're unhappy, to take some action to provide some kind of, there's a mech- mechanism of their local feedback.
Yeah, I think, of course, the theory is, okay, do I have to fix this issue every day? But like, if there was a way for us to say, like, alright, you've built up this amount of surveys, like, haven't you taken into account how to fix them, like, once, maybe every, like, Q one, Q two, Q three? Instead of like just saying, you need to fix this every day, you know, like, put into a time limit on it instead of expect to be, you know, you get a complaint and you're expected to fix that complaint, but you, you know, maybe it's like, okay, I see these certain trends, how can we fix this trend, uh, that we're getting bad feedback? And then, you know, try to implement something to fix that. Instead of like, cause I don't, I, I, my fear is, okay, now he's inundated with all of these issues, hopefully not, you know, but it's, I don't want it to be an expectation that he's like fixing it same day or, you know.
Right.
Like, maybe it's not always, you get a call, it's like, okay, these are things we'll take into account, and we will work on fixing those as, um, an organization.
Independent has information of for the city opposed to getting a direct call, this is a major violation.
Right, cause that would be different.
More information.
Mm-hmm.
Think that would be more like, okay, I have a, a city issue, let me call up here, you know, I think city issue versus customer service is different.
Right, yeah, I think with their city issues, people tend to email us, but if it's a customer service issue, they may not email us, they'll just complain about it online, or, or it would be great if he got that, so it would be, you know, what it is.
Yeah, I think that having a form like this just points people to a specific spot instead of having to guess.
Where to go.
Where to go, al- also, something like that could be noticed in the communications part. I, I also think that, you know, having this mechanism to collect data over time, and maybe review it quarterly, or maybe biannually, would be sufficient enough. I get your point, Janine, that like people may could just use the form as a mechanism to report things that they're unhappy about, and expecting some sort of fix to it. So we have to figure out how it work, you know, what the form is about, on the form itself, so at least, you know, people that are reading that information will understand, okay, this is a, a mechanism to provide feedback to the city, but not necessarily expect immediate feedback from the city. And then if they want that, then maybe put it down there, you know, email or call the city or something like that.
Anything else under teamwork? A main and diverse organization. I think that the only thing I wanted to do, there wasn't a lot of things for this, but anything you wanna add?
I'm gonna satisfy the both.
Okay, um, and then under other.
So we've been talking about these educational videos around things like zoning, code enforcement, but there are obviously other educational topics. I like the idea of just having staff in general commit to reading through those every year.
Or reviewing the ones that were already made.
No, you don't take credit for the ones that were already made, you gotta make new ones.
But that also helps people get familiar with staff as well, for sure.
And, uh, and it doesn't have to be just two, it was, that's the expectation, many more.
Anything else under other? So, um, I know that this is under goal setting, but I also, um, spoke to, uh, someone who's a former city manager for Rochester Hills, and he was telling me some things that he does for, uh, or did for evaluations. And the one thing I don't think that we do is we don't do the three sixties.
I agree we should do three sixties, absolutely.
I think that's a good way for us to, for council to understand, because basically, the way that he explained how they do the evaluation, like, that's exactly how we do it. I gather, go over, pass, kind of thing, um, but yeah, that's, I think we should do that, and then we, we need to revamp the evaluation form.
Sure.
Unless you're good with it, cause if you're good with it, then.
There's a lot of overlap on that.
It is.
Everything, you can be pared down and.
I did have a question though, like, what, what, what roles are in scope for these three sixty reviews? Just the city administrator or other people on staff?
Well, regarding us, this is gonna be at least six, and it just being that would be from staff and, and.
And then staff would review, city administrators.
Yeah, I mean, all of us would be providing, council and staff providing three sixty for both city attorney and city manager.
Yeah, okay.
And maybe even, whatever the D S C, you know, but that's kind of the.
But so yeah, the flip of that, of course, is city administrator, the city attorney providing feedback to us, three sixty review with the council, I would.
That's different because they don't, they don't put us in place either. You know, residents are top of the.
Yeah.
Some labor people want, I'm thinking, I don't want my role to be there.
Well, I just, if you're gonna do true three sixties, seems to me that the one employee that the city council hired probably should have an opportunity to provide feedback to their boss.
In the big scheme of things, in the, in the, in the big scheme of things, but the reason why I'm saying that is because their livelihood jobs are based off of this, where you're giving us the information, thank you, I appreciate the information kind of thing, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I get what you're saying, but the reason I'm saying is because I don't feel, I don't know how long this role, how many years I've been here, but when we do these evaluations, they are, they've never changed over all the years, and having these sixties from reporting to the city manager might give you a different idea, you don't just be checking the box, you need expectations, you need expectations, well, here's something that came up, this seems to be coming from staff, a reoccurring.
That right now we're not hearing about.
Exactly.
And that would provide a mechanism to hear.
Exactly.
Can we do that one year?
We did it one year, only not listed.
For.
Yes.
Yep.
He says not his name. So that's what I was just.
Okay, I, I just asked the question.
I mean, if you wanted, just to have it as.
Well, if you're more like, you, would you find that behind you?
I think the hesitation comes from Mary was saying, cause this council, cause it depends on the council, depends on the day where either of us could be let go at any whim. So if there's one day where council's not in a good mood, and we provide a valuation that might not be, be the most favorable, helps us out, you know? So that, that's where the hesitation comes from my side of things. Now, providing just constructive feedback like we normally do in conversations, right, and you go back and forth, that's fine.
Right.
The, the re- any valuation of each and every council member brings a hesitation.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, cause we can.
That might be a lot of work too.
Yeah, like. And, and cost, you know, there, but, um, but, yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, I mean, we kind of get that regularly with Mike, maybe with him more often than you guys do, um, but yeah, I'm, I'm sure he gives you guys feedback and opinions as well.
Sure.
Well, is it, is it, is it sufficient, the feedback you're getting?
Right now, actually.
Yeah, okay, so maybe there's no point in changing that, but the three sixties for staff.
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
Okay, anything else about this?
Um, the only other thing is, uh, some of the things are measurable, but we, then we need to have a procedure to actually go back and quantify the measurements. Right, we talked about that with this feedback form, but, you know, we're trying to make these smart goals. And at some point over the course of the year, when we're trying to achieve those goals, we need to do an inventory and audit, how, how far along did we achieve those goals? Were we successful, and get in, and achieving the goal, one example is, you know, implementing P T O tools and procedures for staff. Right, got done, right, we crossed it off next year's goal, right, so, you know, some of the goals are gonna always be there, and every year they're the same, but you still wanna measure, are we doing well against them or not? So I don't think we necessarily need to answer that question right now, but, but the council will think about, all right, well, how, what, what mechanisms do we use to measure our performance against the goals we define?
And that, our former city manager did give us something, from, I mean, it was, of course, from somebody else, but there was a form where, you know, we're gonna, I'm talking about, it seemed like it was like, it was, maybe it was before her, like, I died, because it came from someone else where it was like a, remember the blue, we have blue, red, yellow, green, it meant the same. It was confusing, but it still showed where you needed help with, like, something as simple as that, where you're still on red, this is y'all, this, we did this.
And as far as timing, not to sound like I've got a theme tonight, but, and a good time to do that would probably be when we set the goals for the next year, we evaluate the goals from the prior year.
Just before we do that, yeah, like, stuff like a month ahead of time or something like that, so we have time to consume that information before we set them, that's beautiful. Um, and, and how, how do we capture that information, I think, is this feedback from the council, right, we do some, uh, looking inward, each of us evaluating, all right, how well do you think you did against this goal? Can we put some, some specific examples where we made progress against any single goal?
What, what about, I mean, if, I mean, obviously the goals are gonna be public, what about if there's a resident input as well, in terms of how we did on our goals?
Great.
I don't know what the mechanism for that is, but.
Maybe probably be an online form on the city's website.
Yeah, with a list of the goals and then comments.
Uh, Google.
Or Google forms. So, have you guys looked at how to integrate Google forms into the city website, or how to publish a Google form?
Tom, I think you've done, I think there is an actual mechanism.
There is.
To create a form.
Don't do Google forms, there's something called Microsoft forms, and if you, I don't know if you disseminated the.
Not yet.
Not yet, um, you're gonna get a, uh, report that I made, something for R R C, um, that we had to do a survey. The survey was conducted using Microsoft forms, I'm going to say use that because Google forms has a tendency of locking out people who aren't using Google accounts, and not everybody uses a Google account. Microsoft forms, on the other hand, lets anybody, anytime, you can have it be anonymous, you can have people leave their names, um, make sure the two. But, um, if you're gonna do it, I would say do it through Microsoft forms as a way to label it on to the website on multiple pages, no big deal.
Okay.
So.
And then, are you aware of a way to publish those types of forums?
Yeah.
On the city's website?
Yes, um, it can be done through a report similar to the public participation report that I did, um, that way, it'll be like a downloadable PDF that someone can take. Um, but Microsoft forms, it being Microsoft entity, will let you transfer all the data into Excel, and you can do a breakdown from there.
Sure. Yeah, anything else? That's it, I mean, now, part of me says that B and C should be flipped, because we're still talking about council goals. This kind of goes right into the rules of order procedure update, but that's up to you of how you all wanna do it.
Sure.
C and D probably should be flipped, because it's, the, the rules of order and procedure updates kind of flows to me with the meeting time, goal setting, and all of that. And I think that San Jose temporary opening is gonna have a lot of conversation, uh, behind it.
So, should we prioritize the one that we has a lot of conversation?
I would say that we can get through these last two super fast, and leave the rest, the whole thirty minutes to discuss the San Jose.
So let's do that, let's do that.
Okay, so what we're gonna do, just for everyone else's thoughts, is that we're gonna do, C is gonna come down to E, and, and the last thing we're gonna do is San Jose temporary opening, because I have a feeling that the majority of the people here are here to talk about the opening, and I'd rather give you a whole lot of time to talk about that. So, real quick, for the council rules of order and procedure, I'm assuming that's where you want the cameras to go?
I, I just put it on the ground, just as a visual, uh, we can place it anywhere, since it's going into effect tonight, I just wanted to show such a how much space would take up.
Did you do the same the other room?
My concern about me right there is that it's gonna be a fire hazard.
I would say just go to the other side.
Yeah, over there, or all the way in the back of the room where the cameras normally would have been in the first place. That's just my thoughts on that. Um, the council rules of order and procedures.
Yeah, so this is just a, a conversation of how we have been going on for the past couple of months, um, and you guys are gonna be in the packet, you'll see the actual draft resolution and updated rules of procedure, such a highlight and red just includes a section for video audio recording during public meeting.
Yeah, just add on this, cause it was, uh, it was asked last meeting, there's other communities that do have similar types of policies, um, closest to city's outfield. They, they have, um, similar language in their rules of order and procedure. There's other communities that claim to have, um, City of Mylons supposedly has one, River View supposedly has one, I wasn't able to verify or get actual copies of their rules of order and procedure, so yeah, there's conversation about them having that, um, online.
There's a reference in here to Mylan in the packet.
That came from M M L, M M L.
Yeah, there was, there was, yeah, that's exactly, I think I said that to my, uh, yeah, there was a.
Then I heard a document.
Gotcha, okay.
There's a snippet from an N N L bulletin about these types of regulations. Basically, the N N L bulletin, what it, what it says is that, under the Open Meetings Act, citizens have a right to make audio recordings, video recordings. Councils have a right to act reasonable rules and restrictions on that ability, uh, to minimize disruptions during a meeting. So that's what the, the language that's in your packet tonight, um, the specific requirements of a designated area, um, that the devices have to be able to operate without requiring like microphones up to the podium, or artificial lighting, uh, that the devices have to be set up even prior to the meeting, or taken down after the meeting, um, to avoid disruption, those are, those are all restrictions that are found in other communities and that, uh, are considered reasonable in minimizing disruptions during.
Is there anything else about the council rules of order and procedure update?
Thanks for doing that.
So business uses, money's, uh, services and small box discount retailers.
Yeah, so this is kind of sent from the conversation of short-term rentals that evolved into something else, uh, based on the last study session, uh, council asked us to draft moratoriums for two specific uses, small box retail, so dollar stores, and then, uh, some should catch demand stores, we're just seeing if you have some questions regarding these moratoriums. Uh, I'm gonna try to, I mean, actually I don't make a regular meetings, we have more discussion there. Essentially, this would, in, go into effect immediately unless we're a hundred and eighty days, then we could review from that.
Yeah.
So I wasn't there, so what, what, what was the impetus for this?
So when I was reading some things, um, actually from my class, about how it affects people, and it, it turns into being a vicious circle, not putting people more into debt, and.
For the payday loan.
Yes, and it's, it's almost like predatory.
Yeah, high interest.
Yeah.
So the, the one from the, the packet, um, I was a little concerned with the language on both of them, so, let me just find it real quickly. One of them for the, for the financial, it, it seemed like it was kind of generally worded, um, so like I was thinking, okay, well, what happens if a charter, you know, financial planner wants to set up a shangha, I know obviously, it's not designed to target that person, but the general nature of the, of the language kind of, yeah, so on page one thirty-one, the packet, it says money service businesses, so, is there a way we could be a little more specific?
So that is actually a specific definition.
Industry term?
Yeah, so those, uh, any type of, a, a financial institution is regulated under certain statutes that pertain specifically to financial institutions. Money service businesses are exactly the type of business, check cash in, uh, payday loans, things of that nature, and they have their own separate regulations and, and state licenses that they have to apply for. That's why I, I categorize them as that.
That's fine, I just didn't see a definition in there, so I.
Yeah, and again, that's part of what I put in there too, is that, you know, we need to define these, these entities, um, and then create reasonable, again, restrictions probably most applicable through zoning, uh, through the zoning ordinance that, uh, make the most sense, I mean, you can't outright ban a specific use, but you can, you can put certain parameters in that you're ensuring that your organizations that you are allowing in your community are not going to be more of the predatory, or have, you know, just, um, just have some standards and some definitions so that, you know, and then also so that you know where they're going, I mean, again, if a, a business doesn't have a designated. And then also so that you know where they're going, I mean, again, if a, a business doesn't have a designated place to go, theoretically they could, you know, kind of open up shop elsewhere.
Yeah, so, so is the idea, um, to do the hundred and eighty day moratorium to give the planning commission time to analyze and determine what they wanna do with zoning?
That's what, um, based on the outcome of these approved this evening, uh, the next step would be for the planner and I to, um, put together some proposal that we could present to the planning commission and they can consider it. Planning commission would hold a public hearing for its reading and then council would approve this.
Alright, and then for the, for the second one, the same thing, is that, is that a, a legal term or was it a small box discount retail store, is that a legal term? Because it's a lot of Phil's Discount Shoes once that.
Yeah, that is, um, so that terminology actually came from the City of Southfield that, uh, relatively recently did a similar type of moratorium. They ultimately ended up, um, enacting a, um, an ordinance that limits them based on density, so, but that's, that's their language that they're giving to you.
Um, the money service business industry definition, like I've heard those stores referred to as payday loan stores as well as.
Check cashing.
Uh, to me, check cashing and payday loans are not the same thing. They check cash and you like come in with a paycheck and then they cash it for you and take a cut and give you the rest of the cash, whereas payday loans, like, you're gonna get a loan against something that you're getting in the future paycheck. I, I, and my only question is, does this money service business industry definition encompass both those types of uses?
I mean, I guess it's yes and no, um, because as you're asking the question now, I'm thinking of, you know, uh, maybe Danny's, is, I'm not saying he is, but maybe they're in the practice of if you come in with a paycheck and they'll cash your check for you. That's, you know, you're not, you're trying to regulate an act, not necessarily a service or an industry, um, so I, I'm pretty comfortable and confident that this money service businesses will encompass all of those types of entities. That that is their sole purpose is to, is to either give payday loans and just cash your check without that, probably more the latter, they're probably more in the business of giving payday loans. But, uh, again, the, so, there wasn't a whole lot of distract, uh, uh, direction and I had asked Mike if we had received any sort of applications or anything that was, you know, that kind of prompted this, but, um. So this is, it is very general by design, uh, and so we can kind of give it, give some more information on it and then provide, what's the potential regulatory ordinances that the planning commission can take a look at, okay.
Well, about the state, is that they consider those two things to be the same, you know, which you.
Well, there's, we, the money service businesses is a separate, I mean, they're differently, distinguish them from financial institutions like the credit union bank, uh, which has their own set of, you know, standards and regulations. If you wanna open a bank, anybody can just open a bank, uh, same thing with, with these money service businesses, there is, there is a license that needs to be changed from the state.
Any ask? So, um, I'll talk about the San Jose temporary opening, um, at the closure during the ride along, well, I drove, but, um, to go look at the, um. Let me back up, there are two streets that's over there that's closed and I can't remember when the other street was closed and that's the one that's on the street from McIntyre. Looking at it, huh, it's gone.
It's gone.
Uh, I can't remember the name of the street, which that could be, it's not too familiar, but anyway, where the school McIntyre sits, it is a, um, that used to be an open street, now it's closed. Thoughts were to switch it from San Jose to, what's the name of the street?
Zercar.
Zercar, thank you, open that street, it's a dirt road, duh.
There's a guardrail at the end of it, isn't there?
Both of them have guardrails, just let me finish this, but, but we went over there. It's, uh, which makes me wonder if the driveway of, of, whether the residents extend it, because I don't ever remember it being like that at the street, can I say? What we were talking about, if you look at, if we consider opening that street, now there's a fault, not a telephone, but an electric pole there.
Yeah, there's electrical pole.
There's a bunch of things that's there where it used to be a straight street. Point being, it was, we can't do it, get there. So then we went over to, um, San Jose and it's where, did you get that information that I asked you for at the time?
I, I requested it, I never saw it yet.
It's a diff, it's, this is, it's, it's not difficult, the, the, the problem is, is that the street's gonna be open. The problem is how we're gonna control it, that, that's the bottom line of it, because, um, it is about, um, emergency situation at this point. And so what I asked Mike to get today was give an example of what the time was, um, from the time at eighteen seven four zero La Crosse, the time that that fire started to the time that they were able to get there. What was the time at that point? And that's going from twelve mile down to Bullfield, just so we have an idea, and we lost the light from that one, so that would give us that idea, just to deal out the facts, but we don't have it. So, there's that. So we were already also, um, not hitting, not we, Southfield or the fire department's not hitting their goals of seven minutes. We were currently at nine, where the goal is for seven. So, um, when we went over there trying to figure out exactly what we could do to open the street, where's not the, uh, uh, flow. So, we went also to, well, it's not the house of Woods property anymore, but we went to Ferguson's, uh, property to show where, remember that gate that used to be there for the, um, and so looking at that, putting something like that there where it can't be open unless it's opened by. Right, and it's a temporary fix until we can figure out what would be, what would be a permanent fix. And that's when I gotta look into, um, some of them from Rochester Hills, again, they had the same situation, and if you go down the street, right next to, um, Optima, Optimize, Optiise? Edward, thank you, and where America is, they had that issue there and they made the street difficult for a car to go through.
Scary pain.
Yeah, and it's a lot of, it's a lot of signage that says you can't go in here, yeah. So, temporary fix is to put this gate up, which, um, I've seen you, if anybody knows carpenters and things like that that can put up there. I guess, I sent them the picture, which I can show you all the picture, but it's a, it's a, it's a gate, it's a regular gate, and then I figured this is just according to me, what I saw. It's putting big trees on both sides, so it doesn't look crap.
Industrial.
Yeah, and making it smaller to, it's not going to be open, it's gonna be small.
Yeah, and then just the, 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 one thing just to point out, I mean, the, the time that you asked Mike to get for that, the fire, that's a half a mile away.
Exactly, but that's why I wanted him to get it.
Yeah.
Yep. This is the, um.
Yeah, I mean, if that fire was there again, they'd probably come down twelve mile again, as opposed to coming through San Jose.
Yes, exactly. So that's why I don't look for a gate.
Yeah, I've seen it.
That's great.
Have you, and we haven't been able to, like, pull like a, um, estimated cost for that kind of gate, because obviously that's a cheaper gate than what we were talking about earlier, but.
No, I faced, uh, with the top of the guys, that's something they could potentially build and add to, our biggest concern naturally is getting it open and getting it face drivable before we worry about the additional things. Like, we wanna get open, we wanna get driven, we wanna get all the signage up, and then from that point is when we think we can actually truly evaluate, hey, can we do this in-house or do we need a signed contractor, a signed contractor, defense contractor out here to build something that's gonna be usable?
And it gives us time to research whether or not there's something available commercially that's not expensive, that's just a. Gate that can easily be open, I mean, you know, communities do that all the time.
But if you, but if you think that our city services can build, um, that makeshift gate, why don't we just implement it now? And, like, open, like, just open it, implement them building it now and then go forward with looking for a, a better option.
We, we could, at the end of the day, it's just.
It's just wood.
Yeah.
I think that's what he said.
It's wood and, you know, it's, it's almost like a, a basic door. It's not, I think we need to do a post in the grass.
It's our post, yeah.
Yeah, it's already there.
Yeah, I think that's what he said.
Get it open.
Yeah, I'm not against it.
Repurpose the, the dead end fence that's there now, like.
Well, that's what, that's what I can do.
Yeah, I mean, all they have to do is put like a regular door, um, handle.
Beams there, you remember? It's maybe about seven beams there and maybe just the three beams in the middle and two on the end.
Which is twelve or thirteen.
So it's only the three or four in the middle that would be taken out and then using the same beams with a gate would go.
Yeah, and they act out, I mean, it happens, there's trees there, and so, just leave it the way it is, you know, I mean, you could add some trees eventually, but I think it's a. But I'm saying, if you repurpose what's there now, I mean, it's been there for forever, so if that's crappy, then, I mean, you could put the trees.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm saying, I'm saying you don't wanna put the gate up and just look like you threw up a gate.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying the wood that's already there, like, I mean, right now, it doesn't, whatever's the, the, it's landscaping there too, you know.
I think once you take out the supports, which you have to do in order to have something that moves, there's not enough, uh, support to hold the cross pieces upright, right?
I mean, I'm saying re, repurpose, so like, you, you're taking this stuff off and you're repurposing.
And just use the pieces, do something.
Right.
And I think that's what he's saying, it's, it's, let's get it open and then we'll figure out how.
I get, yeah, I, I get what he's saying, I'm just saying for, just, almost like, same day, I get what you're saying, I get what you're saying, but, because it needs to be, you need to make sure people can drive through it.
But, I, I, my thing is, you don't open it until you have something in place.
Thank you.
You don't, I mean, I don't think that that is.
That's right.
Before you open it, there should be something in place, just so it's not a free fall.
So cope with the plan and how we're gonna deal with this.
Have the gate there, as soon as you open it, the gate is there, there's more signage that says, um, it's not a thorough clear, um, not just open it.
Yeah, I mean, we can, I mean, we can approve it tonight with the, with the administrat, where we make the motions of administrative, direct discretion in terms of how to close it off.
Table it until you figure out what you're gonna put in.
Well, I, yeah, I would, I would recommend that the specifics of the, because the way that this was drafted, this proposed, uh, resolution is specific that this is temporary in nature, it's for emergency use vehicle only and it's, uh, tied with the traffic control order. So, I think if you're gonna, if you're going to change it to some sort of either, I mean, if you went with just a simple, like a farm gate, it just shows like tractor supply combined for a hundred and forty gallons for a twelve foot gate. And then fire departments have knockbox keys that they can put on, I mean, we, in other communities require that for a lot of developments that they have gated, industrial gate, gates that prevent public from getting in, but also still have fire have access to that. So, I think that's would be a relatively inexpensive fix, but I, I would recommend that if that's allowed, you're going to go, that the resolution on how that street is gonna be utilized is tailored specifically to that. So, if we don't, we, at least last meeting, we didn't have any timetable from, from the fire department when they're gonna start closing these crossovers and when, um, this problem, this current problem is.
The crossovers do have gates.
Do they?
When they're blocking them off, it's in those plans that they gave us.
Okay, I didn't see that, the specific timeline.
Like, it's months, it's like the month of May, the month of June.
So we got them, we got them up at least, so.
But I think that, you know, the, the key thing for you guys to, to remember in this is, you know, yeah, two years ago when the fire department came to us, this was about them lowering the overall response times, improving the score, uh, for the, the rating agencies. That's not what's motivating this, this change.
I have a question about this, because rereading the letter from Chief Metavi from February twenty-fifth, it does look like the, the desire is to alleviate traffic congestion on the main roads for residents. Like, knocks them down with residents, and that the emergency response time increase would be a icon to that. I mean, the three bullet points that he puts in here are traffic relief, safety considerations, which he says allevi, alleviate the strain on local streets, right? So I think that, when I read that, I'm like, okay, so you got a fire truck trying to get to an emergency and by opening the street, the congestion on Evergreen, let's say, is less, and so the fire truck can get to its emergency location faster, which is. You get it, but it, and then the third thing is public support and convenience.
Yeah, I think the, that was discussed, um, with Lieutenant Zhang, I mean, that was, I think clearly their intention was maybe open it to all traffic.
I think they were talking more on this side.
This is specifically San Jose Hall over there.
San Jose Hall, um, but I think it was, I don't think that was how it was received by, by you guys or by Lieutenant Zhang, was that if we are temporarily going to be opening this roadway, it's gonna be limited to emergency vehicles. It's not gonna be open to, you know, anybody that wants to use it, because, one, I mean, the road, you know, well, there, it's not, it's really not, uh, designed for heavy two-way traffic. And I mean, you would, you would have probably have more issues if you did that, uh, versus if you're doing a gate and just letting it. So, I think that might have been their ask, but again, I think it's important to just kind of, that that's not the motivation for, for you guys taking any action on this right now. It's, it's this pending road project that's, that's causing disruptions and, and going to take what, what the fire department already classifies as, you know, long arrival times and make them even substantially longer.
Um, so the other question I have is about, uh, the way that the, um, uh, not the traffic control order, what's the other?
Resolution. Resolution?
The resolution, thank you. The way the resolution is written, you know, specifically the last bullet in there is, once the construction project ends, then we remove the temporary bypass. And essentially it implies that we're gonna restore it to whatever, something similar to what it is now.
Right, and that, that, again, that was taken, you know, again, from the intention that this is temporary. If it was, we were going to remove it and then reevaluate it, well then it's not gonna be temporary anymore, it's, you're opening it to a, for a test phase to see, uh, and you may leave it permanently. So, I, you know, part of that, I think, is to, to just reassure to the residents that when you say it's temporary, you mean that it's temporary and it's in the resolution that it's temporary.
Yeah.
Um, and again, that's why I say if you're gonna, if you're going to, to change, then it kind of, how that roadway is gonna be managed, then the, the resolution that's reflecting that should reflect what, what that actual, uh, use is going to be and how it's going to be, uh, how it's gonna be in the moment.
Okay, so I mean, I, I agree that we need to define what it's gonna look like in the near term to alleviate this concern. And it also needs to take into consideration what it will look like at the end of the project when we're gonna revert it back to a non-bypassable roadway. Like, both those things should be in the resolution, if we're gonna go that route.
Shouldn't we be working towards it, um, like maybe updating the gate and not necessarily just turning it back into a dead end? So they're always gonna need, they're always gonna wanna get into the actual street, so shouldn't we more so be working towards updating the fence, um, you know, in theory and not just making.
That's, that's what I was gonna say, I mean, if we're turning it into, you know, a, a, a gate that only the fire department can open, that prevents other traffic, why, why would we set it back?
So I have a, uh, before you answer, suggestion, right? In the short term, uh, we don't have all the information about what could, uh, a acceptable, uh, blockade that would be accessible by emergency vehicles would look like. Um, maybe we, so we need the resolution as it is with this, you know, a, uh, statement that we're gonna return it back to a non-bypassable roadway, once the construction project is done. But, the question I have is, could we modify the resolution at a future date if we come up with a method to, you know, block it but keep it accessible by emergency vehicles?
Well, if we're not gonna act on it tonight, why do we need to do that? I mean, we'll, we'll be able to know what we want in the resolution depending on what solution we come up with over the next month.
But, but what if we don't? Right, I mean, I think the time.
Well, we're gonna have some type of solution by April, so.
We'll have a solution for opening it, I wanna have a solution for what it looks like once the construction project is over and it's either blockaded or. and it's either blockaded again, or it's an acceptable bypass.
But, but again, I think that's dependent upon what we decide is the solution. I think ultimately, I mean, again, to, to answer your first question, why was there no reference to a gate? Cause when we had the conversation at the last time, we didn't talk about putting a gate in there, so that was not even, even the focus of this one. To answer your question, yeah, we could, we, we can change the resolution again, I mean, you, you have the ability, you have the control over how your, your local streets and alleys are utilized, whether they're open to the public, open to emergency vehicles, or closed entirely, or if you, uh, you know, grant citizens use, uh, the ability to use them privately through, um, an encroachment license process, you, you have that authority as the city council to, to control your local streets. And that authority is enacted through resolution, so that's why this is in the format that it's in. And that goes all the way back to, uh, council standing resolution from nineteen eighty-two, so, uh, that has been a long segment of history on how, on how roads are, are regulated within the city, so. But yeah, I think ultimately what you need, as a body, you need to determine is how, how you see this, this roadway moving forward. Two years ago, when the issue was brought up, there was a town hall that was held, it was overwhelming that the residents were opposed to this street and any other street being opened up on a permanent basis, or even, cause there was discussion about cyber activity in the case at the time. So that, that's, uh, I mean, you guys all obviously well aware of that history, but that's just, uh, why I think it's important to have a full understanding of how, how you see it now and then in the future before you, before you really do want.
Yeah, so I, I'm just taking the, a public statement right now, that from my point of view, like, the, we need to, the resolution should include what it's gonna look like in the short term, and what it's gonna look like once the construction project is over. And if we can come up in the next month with a solution that, at the end of the construction project, allows that road to be blocked, but somehow accessible via a gate by emergency vehicles, then that's in the resolution, that's fine. But if we can't come up with an acceptable solution for that, then it should, the res- the short term, in the short term, the resolution should state, it reverts back, just like the language that's in there right now. I just wanna be clear about, well, if we do that in the future, we could pass a different resolution that modifies that. So I have clarity on that, that only, that's great.
So we'll, so we'll make a motion to table this.
Okay, that's what I was like, this one, sure. Okay, so, um, since we're tabling that, we can go into public comments. Today, the public comments are gonna be limited to three minutes exactly. You have your, um, issue. Um, so if anyone has any, um, wants to speak, please say your name and, as soon as you say your name, three minutes starts. You ready?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Madam Mayor, Council President, members and citizens of Lethwa Village. I'm Terry Thompson, this is my wife Sarah. Uh, we're one of the original, uh, residents of San Jose Court, okay? In fact, we're the first ones, we're at the top of the cul-de-sac. Two years ago was the last time, the first time I was here about this issue. The builder Fred assured us in nineteen ninety-nine that we would have.
One second. Do not put the, um, camera on.
May I film you, is that all right? You're doing a little bit of job.
I'm following her direction.
It's up to you, it's your decision.
Is that, do you want the camera directly on you? Is her private filming of her?
No, it's a public meeting, a public comment.
Let me explain to you, pause the time, it's a private, it's her private, um, phone.
Because they won't record it.
I'm still talking about him, that goes to wherever. The whole thing is that we have complaints from other, um, citizens, they don't want to be filmed, cause we really don't know where her, her film goes. So, are you fine with it?
I put it on Facebook.
Oh, all right, we won't do it, I'm mad.
Okay, so take your, take your camera, turn it around, they don't want.
Do, do you mind if I film you, sir?
This wife just said she does not want it.
Ma'am, did you say you don't want it? You said you don't want it? You said it's fine, you said no? Okay.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, uh, Fred assured us that we would have the paved roads, and at the end of the construction period, that they would, uh, close the street and that they would put a gate up. And the way he told us, they would put a gate up with a lockbox for the police and fire department. So, we were the first ones, and after they did the construction, we were fine with that. And we were noticing the residents were coming through. And it bothered my wife, because the people across from us, they have a blind child. And we got right there, the very last house before you go out, is a family with children, and where we have, you know, grandchildren. And then, see, now my wife is handicapped, I have, uh, people, neighbors, we like to walk. So, we noticing all those cars riding, coming through there fast, and I said, well, wait a minute, Fred said he was gonna block this off once they did it. Once they finished building the houses. So Fred came to us one evening, because there was a discussion about, this was in two thousand, late two thousand, two thousand one. Once they did this in two thousand one, they were talking about maybe keeping it open. And I told Fred, you assured us when we were in negotiations, that once you were through, you would pave the streets, cause we have our driveway paved, cause we made agreement with him, when he got through, he would pave the streets and he would pave our driveway. And I said, Fred, you assured us that when you got through, that you was gonna put a gate there, and it was gonna be a lockbox for the police and fire department. Citizens, let me tell you all, after Fred talked with me, the city put up some kind of temporary, that traffic went from people zipping through there to nothing, just like that. I mean, just like that. So, uh, when I heard, uh, what was it, a person from Lethwa Village came out about last month, uh, the last time you all had a meeting, and I was sorry I missed that. So when the person came out today to remind us about the meeting, and then I remember when they said, yeah, the fire department said they wanna have access, and I'm like, whoa, wait, 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 wait. I was promised twenty years ago that you were gonna build a fence with a lockbox for the police and fire department. You all didn't see fit to do it then. They put up this, what we got now, you know, and I figured my neighbor did that, cause he's in the landscaping, and they got the fence, and they got all the shrubbing and whatnot, but we were happy because you didn't have all that traffic speeding through.
So Mr. Thompson, um, your time is up, but I do have a question for you.
Yes.
So you're saying originally, you were told that it's gonna be a gate there with a lockbox.
We were told it was gonna be a gate there with a lockbox for the police and fire department. And when, um, Fred told us that, and like I said, right after, cause he came to our house. And shortly thereafter, the city put some kind of temporary thing, but that traffic stopped just like that. Just like that, and so when we started getting notice about the state, I mean, the Southfield Fire Department wants to have access, I'm like, wait, 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 I've been here twenty-seven years, now you concerned about my safety? No, 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 no.
I will say this, is that at least from my perspective, and thank you for really, um, letting us know about that, because from my perspective, the street is not gonna be open without some type of gate in front of it.
We were told that they were going to, once he did the construction.
No, I'm saying now.
Yeah, well, well, they told us, this was again, originally in nineteen ninety-nine, cause that's when we dropped the hole. And he assured us that once they finished all the construction, they were gonna pave the streets, which they did, and they were gonna put that fence up, well, apparently some kind of discussion came, cause he came to us, he, uh, came to our house personally and wanted to know, would there be a problem? And we explained to Fred about how the traffic was speeding through, and we were concerned about the blind, um, child across the street from us. And I'm concerned about this house right here with all those little kids. So, and then when I was told, well, now the fire department, and I'm like, well, wait a minute, my wife fell, and we had to call the Southfield Fire Department, and they didn't complain about coming to us. And then, if it was a problem, if it's a situation you all addressing now, why didn't you address it twenty-one, twenty-four years ago? When Fred got through building all those houses, and he told us that he was gonna put up a fence with a lockbox. And I didn't say anything, because I figured that that block that you got there, to me, it looked good, it doesn't look crappy, young man, I don't live in crappy areas.
No, 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 I was, no, 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 so he was, he was, he was saying, I said the crap, you don't want to put something up that looks crappy.
Exactly, and I wholeheartedly agree.
That's what I'm saying, how would it currently be there? Um, is there anyone else that would like to be heard? Before, okay.
I just wanna.
You wanna say your name, sir?
Ditto, that, oh, my name is Richard Bryant, and I'm also in that San Jose Court. And we were one of the first ones there. And I was told twenty-five years ago, me and my wife, that the fence that's there now was temporary, and it was gonna be replaced with a, what he called a breakaway, so that the fire department could get through. And that's basically it. And I'm just wondering, what does temporary mean? What's in the budget? I hope you got, put this in the budget to put this.
So that's, I mean, that's what, that's what Councilman Hammond was actually saying, and the fact is that that's what we need, that's why it's not gonna be voted on tonight, because we need to, I mean, what does this look like? And do we put up a fence now and return it to the way it was, or do we put up a fence and figure out what's the next step of making it where it is a breakaway for emergency vehicles to come through? So that's what we need.
Also, that street, if a fire truck is coming down there and it's a car already there, there's no place to pull off.
Well, no car would be able to perp there if we opened that street though, at that point. Um, before we go on to the next one, is that, I'm guessing, because the other street that I was talking about earlier was open, because I know that, I don't know how long ago that street was closed, but, yeah, Sarah Tolda was open at some point. Yeah, there was a street behind you. Is, um, uh, Rick, you wanted to be, or?
Yeah, just a couple real brief comments about your, about the town halls. If you're concerned about the structure, maybe the idea would be, the first town hall of the year, have it be wide open, so that people can make comments and suggestions about what they're more interested in. Then, following town halls would be more structured and focused on what people brought up, as far as what they're interested in. That way you don't have to do surveys, you know, it's freewheeling. Looking at fiscal responsibility, looking to back up with, uh, what Councilman Hammond said, looking at performance of the city contracts and cost of the city contract. I mean, everybody's told, every couple of years, you should look at your auto insurance, because even if you're pleased with whoever you've got, shop around, prices might have changed. Same thing with contractors with anything else. I mean, is, you know, is, you might be real pleased with who we've got, but are they the best price? And have they performed to the standards you want? And let's see. Oh, teamwork. Recognition for, I always like to say, I, I like to give warm fuzzies. No matter where I'm at, if I'm at Home Depot and somebody's really giving me great service, I will make a point of finding the manager and saying, hey, George over here in Hardware did a great job with me, took his time, et cetera, you know, just wanted to let you know. Well, turns out that, I don't know if you, you're familiar with Home Depot, when you see these people with all these badges on their aprons, those aren't training in different areas. They get badges for a certain number of compliments or that voice, all right? So, if we had something, something simple act, or a simple card at the front desk, did you get good service? Do you, you know, did you not get the best service you want? Fill it out, drop it in a box. Sure, can you do it right then, you can take it home, bring it back, do it online, whatever, that way, you know, people know. Because people have a tendency to complain easily, but they don't necessarily have that tendency to give warm fuzzes. They figure, okay, you're doing your job, you know, I, this is what I expect. Well, I think people need to be told and get that reward, hey, you did a good job, keep it up. And then whoever's looking at all those cards, all right, they can see, is there a pattern? Is it always employee B that gets the compliments and employee Q that gets the complaints? Or is it time of day, or, you know, what's going on? So, great proponent of KISS, keep it simple stupid, um, uh, it's something people can do right now with pen and pencil, instead of computer. More power to it.
Thank you, is there, um, wait, I've got about thirty minutes. Um, is there anyone else that would like to be heard? Yes, sir.
No, Jonathan Turner. Three quickies, um, first off, I missed the last, uh, session, the last, uh, planning session, or, you know, this meeting. Uh, I'm having trouble understanding the, and, and I was re- just reading, and you were talking about putting cameras in here, is that correct, in this room?
Cameras are in here already.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you mean cameras as in?
In this room?
Yeah, cameras right here.
Oh, 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 not, so this is not for recording meetings?
No, this is just for security, but no, we, we're not talking about bringing cameras back for a study session.
Okay, okay, but I don't understand the, and I was reading some comments of Autumn's. I don't understand the reason for having these meetings in this room, and then the council meetings in another room.
Good point. The, the council meetings, uh, the, the study sessions are to have open dialogue like this?
Sure, yeah.
And being able to, um, have conversation back and forth, actually with the residents, if that's what you wanted.
Right.
Um, the reason why the cameras went away from in here was not, it was cost effective, yeah, it was cost effective.
Yeah.
And, um.
No, I'm, I'm just more, this is more about the reason for doing it, and to, I don't have the best hearing or the worst, and I did not hear the first, probably the first seventy-five percent of this meeting today.
It's something that council can take up.
I, I, I heard the gentleman with the great radio voice.
It's, it's something that the council can take up again. We have not, um, again, let me do my little thing, I've been on council since twenty-eleven. Only, um, only when the council turned over after Frank was mayor, was when the cameras came in here for study session. So all the years before, you never had a camera in study session, and it was always in here. Yeah, it was, I don't mean, I, because I don't recall seeing it either.
It's on YouTube.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry for even engaging you, but the point is, is that now we had the council, this is when, uh, Councilman Ferguson was on here, and we saw that people weren't, the council, and this, you like it or not, I mean, this is just the truth, and I'd rather be honest with you, is, we decided to take the cameras out, because a lot of council people felt stifled in what they wanted, what they needed to say, and how they felt about things, instead of being scoffed at or said, you know, little things to. And so it became when we were able to communicate a smidgen better about items. Then on top of that, the camera cost to have it set up in here.
Yeah.
Now, the reason why we don't have it in there is because I can, we can also, it's easier to communicate in here.
If it's a, if, if there isn't a large turnout, I had misunderstood what cameras you were talking about, so.
Yeah.
I forgot about that, but I just, feedback that it's difficult to hear you guys.
Gotcha.
So, if you could, if you could be more aware of it and speak up, or maybe sound reinforcement.
Yeah, maybe we can bring the microphones back.
So that we can hear what you're saying. Because we have the right to attempt and listen, but we can't, we can't hear you.
Absolutely.
So the other point is, I understand all this discussion about one end of Lethwa Village that enjoys not having cut through traffic, but we have a lot of cut through traffic on all of the streets that cut through, and we're not doing a good job of controlling that, and the traffic is getting faster and faster and faster.
So can I ask you this question, cause we're running out of time? Can I ask you one question?
Yeah.
And I, I really ask you this, can you give me, and either you can tell me in the other room, or give it to me, or us, uh, personally, give us three ideas of what you have to stop the traffic, or just to, to slow the traffic down? And I, and the reason I'm asking, cause none of us, we've complained about this since forever, and so I'm honestly asking, what's your suggestion for it? I suggest, I suggest, uh, what do they call it that you hate so much? I, one hundred percent am, uh, for speed bumps. I'm sorry, so.
I don't hate speed bumps, they're just reasons.
I just, you know.
Whatever will slow them down. Whether it's stakeouts.
Thank you so much.
Random stakeouts or speed bumps, or I don't think.
I just, I'm, I'm truly looking for some suggestions from, um.
Or ask PD for. We're asking PD for suggestions.
So, um, and I hate to cut you off, because we're, we're running out of time. Is there anybody else that's not gonna be here for the meeting in the next room that wants to be heard right now? Yes, ma'am?
Um, I was, I don't, I'm not sure, is that a monitor, or is that a TV that's written like that?
It's a, it's both.
Okay, so is there a way for when we do get to, after you've decided what kind of gate you're gonna put up, that somebody can bring maybe some schematics, move and see on a monitor?
Absolutely.
Cause I couldn't see on your phone, obviously, so I didn't know what you were showing.
I didn't show you.
And I brought some on my phone too, that I happened to look up to see, so that would be helpful.
Absolutely, I'll show it to you, I mean, it's actually, if you go out your neighborhood and you turn...
I know exactly where you're talking about, I think...
Is that, that's the picture I took of the house in the woods, that's about it, so...
Okay.
Yes, absolutely, we'll do that. Are you not gonna be at the next meeting?
I need to speak.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Autumn Susannas, um, I was at the last meeting last month, and, um, Attorney Baker, um, all due respect, you're fresh out of a hundred-and-day, hundred-and-twenty-day suspended license for, uh, professional misconduct and dishonesty. Your counts of, of, of misbehavior are, are long. You are incorrect about whether we discussed a gate or not. At first, uh, Mike Green, our city administrator, said, uh, gate, Simon activated, would be a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. Then after checking, thanks to, uh, Mr. Hammond, asking him to fact-check that, it came down to sixty-five thousand. Um, we did discuss it. I'm, I am absolutely, uh, in favor of not doing something temporarily, like clearing it, and then seeing what can be installed. Install it first, um, the people were promised, we don't wanna make, we don't wanna break promises of the people who live on that street, who are promised a dead-end street. Um, but, uh, open it for emergency vehicles, absolutely, if that's the goal, do it. But you're right, Mr. Hammond, that letter from the, uh, Southfield Fire Department starts out, the first, very first sentence is that this is to allow the, uh, access for the public during the road construction. Now, I found some interesting things online about incentives for communities that allow, uh, cut-through traffic during times of construction, so I'm curious if that's what's actually feeding this, um, sudden re-interest in opening that. Um, is, is money gonna be changing hands, and we're not being told about it? We know that, uh, it did take some time to get to that man, who unfortunately did die in his home in a fire last summer. We know that about half of our hydrants don't have adequate water flow, so whether the police were able to get there quickly or not, we know that our Southfield fire people have told us, they tried to hook up, they tried to bring water and hook up the Southfield, because our system is not dependable. Um, and also, I really highly question, can we modify a resolution at a future, future date? I doubt we can. That's a, that's a legal document where you guys are voting on, and then you're just gonna rewrite it after? I don't think that's how it works, um, I could be wrong. But I, I'm afraid I don't, I don't have faith in your, uh, your judgment, as you are guessing things out loud and not referring to the actual, uh, writing. And, uh, is, is that it, um, that I wrote down? I don't know. I'm, I'm very concerned about this. I too have a disabled child, who will be right in the path of the traffic that will be cutting through the neighborhood, starting at Evergreen and heading towards Southfield Road. Mayor Garrett, you said putting big trees on the other side, there is a gentleman here who unfortunately left. He planted a big tree, and because you guys have this on the agenda, you know what he did? He denuded it of all its branches, from the tip to the base, right at the side of that gate. It looks so sad, he, he basically killed this tree for you guys, so you could have, he was doing the right thing. He wanted, I saw it, I spoke to him today.
So, your time is up.
His name is George, his name is George.
He told you that he cut the tree because of...
You can see it, and the...
So, I'm asking you a specific question.
Yes, he did it for you, he did it for you.
Okay, that's what I wanna know. Number two, was that nice really to say for, um, Attorney Baker, did they have anything to do?
It's true, it's the truth, it's the truth. It's the truth, and you haven't acknowledged it, or admitted it, or apologized, or anything.
That is being very divisive about people.
It's the truth, and you should be reporting these meetings, you should, and you, you will not make me surrender my phone. You should be reporting these meetings, that's on you. I wouldn't be here if you reported these meetings.
Autumn, no longer are you going to attack any staff, any resident, and the reason why I'm asking the resident...
I'm not attacking a single person.
This is me, the reason why I was asking these people if they want their face, their faces on Facebook, is cause there's a lot of people saying that they don't, and it's because you are being bullying people on Facebook.
Because that woman flipped me off, and she got embarrassed, on camera.
Your time is up, but the fact is, when you go in here, your camera, which we're gonna have it on, uh, agenda tonight, don't put your camera in people's faces and listen to it.
I never have, review the footage, review the footage.
You have firsthand approval for...
I ask respectfully every time.
No, you do not.
Yes, I do.
And so what I'm gonna say, every time you just...
And they're signed outside, saying we're on camera.
Anytime that you degrade a resident or a staff person, I am going to...
You are derelict in your duties, you are, I'm sorry.
And one thing is, I will promise you, and I'm hoping you have this, it's, it's over for the bullying, it's over.
Okay, I hope you have a mirror for that statement.
No one's bullying you, Autumn, you can be the victim here all you want to, but there's no more.
You're the one with the gavel, mayor.
Absolutely, and you're gonna see a lot more of it coming this evening.
We've seen plenty, thanks.
You have, but we're done with the bullying, and I've seen enough of it.
Oh, okay.
And you can check YouTube and see that these meetings used to be recorded and posted.
The meeting is adjourned, and Autumn, I've been coming here longer than you have, and they were not recorded.
And McIntyre was never open, ask around people who were here then.
I know, I haven't been here for twenty-five years.
Ask around, I hoped it had been open too. I thought that was a great solution, but it was never open.
See you in the next room.
Very nice to meet you, thank you.
Try to be a kind person.
You, I hope, you had a career in radio.
You use kindness as a bully club, it is unacceptable. You be kind, you be kind.
It's terrible, it's a terrible...
Honestly, look in the mirror, honestly.
Oh, I look in the mirror every day, and I'm fine.
I know, I know, I know, it's narcissism, I know.
I'm sorry, well, there's...
Did you, um...
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Okay, does it count as a mention? Okay, okay. Have you, you heard it wrong? Yeah, yeah, yeah. With this one, I was kind of surprised.
Yeah, no, it was a...
Who left the coke? Who left the coke?